The Runnymede Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect, as well as posted notices in the Borough Hall, Runnymede Post Office, Maryville School, Lyne-Bingham School, Grace Downing School, and the Runnymede Public School District website. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Here.
Ms. Bebe.
Here.
Ms. Buckland.
Here.
Ms. Davidson.
Here.
Ms. Schulego.
Here.
Ms. Murray.
Here.
Ms. Panzarella.
Here.
Ms. Sams.
Here.
Ms. Spalding.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Also present, Mark Iain, two superintendents, Sean McCarron, Business Minister, Supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction, Mrs. Yessi, Principal of Bingham and Downing, Steve Bailey, Principal of Bolts, Bill Silva, Vice Principal of Bolts School, Gladys Helper, Child Studying Team Supervisor, and Frank Hines, Supervisor of Building and Grounds. At this time, I need approval of minutes on A-21, Regular and Executive.
Motion made.
Motion made by Angel. Motion made by Angel, seconded by Maria. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Ms. Buckland.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Schulego.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Here, I don't give. I'll take that one. Okay. Need a motion for the financial report period ending August 2018.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Chaz.
Second.
Seconded by Dennis. Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Ms. Buckland.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Schulego.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
At this time, there are no presentations or correspondence, so we're open for public comments on agenda items only. Does anyone in the audience have any public comments on the agenda items? Not them.
We don't have presentation, but can I present my psychology?
Yes, you can.
This is our list. And I wanted to introduce her and thank her for helping me with the parent's presentation. She did a lot of the legwork, and so I'm just thankful to have her. It's awesome.
Thank you, and welcome.
Welcome, that was.
All right, Ms. Iain.
I'll do a quick presentation tonight, just regarding enrollment. We have 819 students by the mark where I put 813. I did include six out of district placements. That number's down from 13, I believe, we had in June. As of last year, we had 859 students. Now, we're currently at 819. The reason for that, we have 20 less kindergarten students to show up here this year, which isn't a bad thing. It's actually great. Our teachers love it. We're also the eighth grade number. We have about 10 less eighth graders than we had last year in June. Also, right now, our pre-K, obviously, we have less pre-K students. We could be always have three slots open for any students, the early intervention programs and that. So I don't want you to be alarmed if those numbers are going to be low, but that is the reason why we have that. I gave you the breakdown, 165 students at Downing, 177 at Bingham, 471 at Bolts. Staff open activities took place on September 4th. We did a district overview like we always do, review of benchmark testing, data, goals of each district, building, and school levels. And the second day, there was PD rotations, included RTI, Google updates, because that's always changing. Also, we had to do the mandated dance and training for evaluation. First day for students was very smooth, I thought. An opportunity to be out at Downing on the first day. I only saw one child at Downing reluctantly going into the building, and within two minutes, the staff had the child in the building and secured. And then any after-ends I haven't seen, I see the kids running out of the building. Parents seem to be the ones reluctantly taking them. It's been smooth, and we do appreciate every effort to do that. And if there's any issues that did pop up with parents or students or scheduling, all those things were quickly taken care of. Facilities, I want to thank Mr. Hines and his crew for getting all the buildings ready. Obviously, it's a big task. We have a lot of stuff going on, especially in this building, all throughout the summer. So that window shrunk. Did a good job opening everything up. The kitchen finally did pass all its inspections last Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday? Yeah, Thursday.
Thursday, Friday.
By Thursday, around 11:00.
We're up and running. We're cooking. So we had pizza for a couple days. The kids were not disappointed in that. These kind of kids couldn't find, quite eat pizza every day. If there was any concerns from parents, we addressed those concerns. We, you know, the census was refunded, but everything else has been great. So uncommended ladies for working the kitchen. We did have time tonight, we could do a quick little tour of the facility. I won't lock it away. You can't lock yourself in the freezer. I tried to lock myself in.
It's cold.
It's cold. Plus, we do have to be careful of the cold. And then, we have also Officer Brooks has been a great addition to the staff in all three buildings. I see a lot of him. He's very active in all three buildings. Students like him probably more than they like, you know, some of us sometimes, but he's doing a really great job. That job is morphing daily as we speak. And then, obviously, our facility upgrades some of the things we wanted to have done this summer that we weren't able to have done. Those things will begin shortly, as far as some door work on the doors, entrance ways, and security upgrades with cameras and the...
Fleechers.
Yeah, that's right. The fleechers also are being replaced inside the gym here at Bolts. So we'll be able to add seating. Not a lot, but we're going to put a fourth row in there.
If those four boards are gone.
So we'll take a look at that. Yep. Other than that, back to school nights last week. Thought all three were very well attended, and everyone here at Bolts. I thought I had a lot of people, because the department was out of control, as it always is, but they had nice presentations. I was able to attend that, as well as the Bingham and Downing. I flipped off with Mrs. Yessi, the greeting was dismissed, both those buildings, and they were also well attended by Mrs. Yessi. Had some survey results that she'll provide, Patty, and the next principals.
Yeah, I got the results after I submitted the fourth one, but it was, they were all very positive. It was 93% or above strongly agree or agree to all the things that we've done, like communication, the video, the presentations, and being positive. So I shared that with my staff at the staff meeting today, and it was just nice. A lot of parents helped, a lot of really positive comments. I shared those comments with the staff, and yeah, I thought it went really well, and teachers always do a great job with their opening presentations, which really helps set the stage for the whole year, so.
And we're always tweaking our faculty's work activities. I know they include the elementary school, they gave two different sessions. They mentioned children in multiple classrooms over the middle school. They do a similar format, but they hit most of their, if not all, their teachers. I want to thank the Rotary, Officer Murray, for setting that up. They had to look at what they find in the child's bedroom, set up in an all-purpose room. So the parents were cycling through there, apply their gym uniforms, or get some rental of musical instruments, and a nice ground in there. So I want to thank them. That was a great program. And other than that, please check out the Facebook page and the website. I can always compare. Parents do that for Picture Days already coming up, Spirit Days, Red, my favorite thing, Red, Rippen Week activities. I have to say that's slow, that's what I always want to say. So make sure you check those things out if you want to attend any of those things. Obviously, they're already posted, but just let us know. Just show up and, you know, have fun. Last thing I want to say is the next board meeting, we are going to move that over to Bingham School. We will be in the all-purpose room over there. Then Mrs. Yessi has some students coming. We will broadcast that all over the place, give people an opportunity to attend that event if they're not coming down this way. Same time, at that time. Last thing, National Wolf School, they have to go. So I want our parents to come walk with us. We're going down again this year, and then we're going to have that next year, National Wolf School. It's Thursday, October 4th, rain or shine. Hopefully, we're shining bright. Any questions?
Would it be possible for Mr. Brooks to come out to our next board meeting? I'd like to meet.
I actually have that. I wrote that down.
He actually requested to me to come to meet everybody and slip my line, so I'll make sure he's here next time.
Yeah.
And there's a couple young guys that all sort of will be here, all three of them will be here tonight.
Thank you. Time to be counted.
Okay, so in terms of the business office, everything is up and running. All of our grants have been finalized from last year. Those reports are all due to the state at this point in time. We submitted for the Early Childhood Expansion Grant, which is a five-year expansion program. We will find out in October if we did receive that grant, so we are waiting on that. We're in the process of getting all the information for New Jersey School Boards Convention, so we have different information pieces coming in daily. You will receive information for school boards at the next Board of Ed meeting, like the normal packet that you receive, as far as what events are taking place, and who's signed up for governance, and all those different pieces that are necessary for you to have. Over the past two years, Scott Murakovich has worked extremely hard with the state to gain Runnymede as being a childcare provider. Many school districts, in order for us to receive vouchers, or for families who the parent might, you know, only make a certain amount of money, or might be going to school, they provide vouchers for those parents for childcare. Many school districts, when they saw the process, chose not to go through the process and just, you know, said, "We'll do a sliding scale" or whatnot. It's a great resource for families that need that help and support, and Scott's done the process, and we've received official certification for all three buildings. So we are a childcare provider. At this point in time, I think we're the only school in Camden County, and there were three schools that were going through the process. So we've received our certification officially for all three of our buildings, which is great. So parents with vouchers, and that's a three-year license that we received. But what's interesting is because there's so many agencies involved in getting that license, and school districts used to be exempt from that process altogether, but if you're receiving money from those agencies, you know, you have the Department of Health, you have the Department of Child and Families, you have all these different people coming out to inspect our facilities, speak with our staff, and see that we are in compliance with everything that we're doing, that we've received all the training that's necessary. So that speaks volumes to Scott and all of the before and after care staff, who work very hard in making sure that they've attained all those required trainings. And it's provided a great resource for our families. As you know, our numbers have increased every year for before and after care, and also for our summer camp that we run. At Bingham and Downing both, we're at needing three staff members at this point in time, because we have over 30 students most days that are staying for before and after care. So I think that speaks volumes to all the hard work that they've put in, and the environment that they've created for our students. As far as, the only other major thing is right now, we do have all of our park data, and we're continuing to get more disaggregated reports. I will be giving an official presentation at the October Board of Ed meeting for the park assessment. We are finalizing our benchmarking assessment for the month of September, so that will be done in the next week, with all students taking their initial star rating and star math scores. Questions?
First one, the childhood expansion grant, is that to have more classrooms for preschool and assuming, or a longer gap?
So it's a five-year program. It would be a five-year expansion grant. So in order to receive the funding, you would have to, sorry, I'm trying to get it in. In order to receive the funding, like, let me just, in order to receive the funding, you have to be standing from a half-day program to at least a full-day program. It does not mean that you have, so we've had to put out a tentative idea of what that would look like. If we receive the funding, it is a competitive grant. There's a pot of money, which means, you know, we like competition, but there's a lot of money, and it depends on what resources we have available. More points are given for different areas as far as compliance, but it was also a very short period of time that we had to put the grant together. It was literally like a two-week turnaround period. So if we don't receive the money in this cycle, they are saying that it will be another cycle for the 1920 school year. This cycle now is for the current school year that we're currently in. So if there isn't, we already have the entire grant written, and I think, you know, the goal would be then, just like with the sustainability grant, you know, you have everything there, you have all the pieces together. It's then saying, okay, well, what's your feedback, having those conversations with, you know, the resources that are available, and rewriting and moving forward. So ideally, I think, you know, it would be bringing students in earlier, because we find that those early interventions definitely help our incoming kindergarten students, which is why for Title I this year, we brought kindergarten students in who were identified early. We did our Junior Hawks Camp, and all of those were very well received, and we had a good turnout.
Good. Second question, the voucher program. So where should we start at this point?
So we've always had the voucher, because we've been going through the process. However, we received, it was temporary, which meant they were coming out all the time, and we had to submit all these different things. So like, one of the final things they needed was a policy that you guys had a first reading of last time for technology for before and after care specifically. A lot of the things that they wanted, we already have as district policies, and since it's a district program, that was our reasoning idea, but now we've received official...
Full certification.
Full certification, which we then hold those certificates for three years, and it's in all three buildings.
So can we get this info out to parents, so they're aware of this program? Because I'm sure there's plenty who are paying full price for daycare, and you're eligible for services through DSA.
Absolutely.
So can we get that out there? And can a parent switch over from being a full-time parent to go through the voucher program halfway through the year?
With us running the program, we're very accommodating for any needs that arise with parents and families. That's one of, we feel like that's a benefit that we can offer. So our families who receive free reduced lunch are already informed of...
Yeah, I was going to say that next.
Of before and after care, and of course, that number, we're always looking to identify and make sure we're receiving.
I want on governance. Is each board member responsible, registered, or does your office...
We take care of all. So last year, they registered everyone themselves, like, not you guys, but school boards. If someone needed governance, they registered for that. I am, I just received the census back. I will make sure that everyone's registered for what items they need. So anyone who was just re-elected would be governance four this year, unless it was taken elsewhere, because you can't take them throughout the year or online. And then, anyone who is newly elected to the board, you start off with Governance One, then Governance Two, so you just move up each year until you get to Governance Four. And as you know, once you take Governance Four, it's every three years that you take Governance Four. And that's the update.
Update will update.
Okay. So here's my question. I took Governance Four. It'll be two years, so that means I don't have to take it this year.
Were you just elected this past November?
No, I was on the ballot.
So you shouldn't have to take it.
Okay.
So once you're elected, then you would take it at the next school board convention.
Gotcha.
Does remember Chaz didn't kick you out one year? They said you didn't have to be there.
It was in my bag, and I took it three more times, and I took it inside the pictures when I was two.
Well, I think the governance workshops this year are on the first day of conference.
Instead of the four.
Instead of the last day of conference.
Governance One is on the first day?
Yeah.
The other ones are on different dates?
Yeah.
Because I did just pull that up.
Any other questions for that, for McCarron? It says what?
He has it in our page.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. On our board page here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right. District reports, any questions on the principals' reports? Nurses' report, Building and Ground Report, or Special Education Report at this time? No? PTA, you'll see on their facilities, we have a lot of stuff planned for this school year. Committee report, are we prepared for one, or are we going to wait on that email? I know the committee just met.
Yeah. Mark took notes, and he's going to send an email out tomorrow to every board member, so you know exactly what was discussed. I'll brief everyone, so I'm aware of everything.
And that was curriculum, right?
That'll be out tomorrow.
Camden County Education Services?
Yes. Camden County Education Services, an update there is, they are working on developing a program where school districts could turn to them to have security officers. In that discussion, I mentioned to the superintendent of Camden County Education Services Commission that my experience has been that a lot of districts usually turn to their local police department, but this is an additional service if they wanted to look elsewhere. That would be available for that next school year. They are going to kick off probably sometime after January 1st, a student internship directly at the Camden County Education Services Commission for high school students. They will be paid, and they would work 10 to 15 hours a week doing different types of work at the complex. It sounds like, especially if they're business students, business education students, they would, that would fit perfectly into that type of internship. It's almost like a co-op program.
That would be awesome.
Yeah. They are making some progress with Virtua and Jefferson. They brought Jefferson into the picture. They want to be able to offer in 2019, 2020 psychological assistance to children that are suffering from depression, thinking about suicide, using drugs, using alcohol, any of that. Service for any district. It's a slow process, because they have to look at state regulations and everything else, but they're now working with both Virtua and the Jefferson Hospital Programs to try and develop something for the 2019, 2020 school year. That was Camden County Education Services Commission. At the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, a little action took place. There was approval for someone in the community to build on their property a 30-by-18-foot garage. There was approval for a dance studio, was approved, at the corner of Lindsay and Clemesbridge Road. I'm not sure when that's going to open, because it wasn't stated. The La Quinta Hotel, which was originally the Holiday Inn Hotel, the La Quinta Corporation has just reached an agreement with the Runnymede Borough. They're going to be converting that, a $5 million renovation, converting it to an assisted living complex. It's probably going to take one and a half to two years for the renovations to take place, but that's going to happen. Last thing that came up on the agenda is the redevelopment model that's been developed by consultants. They have to do a formal presentation to the community, and that right now is tentatively going to be scheduled for the month of November. So anyone that lives on the Black Horse Pike between the Turd Pike and Clemesbridge Road, you could be affected, but only if you agree. The only way that they would take over a property is if that family or person or person's living in that dwelling wants to sell, otherwise they won't touch it, but they want to do some kind of redevelopment with the Black Horse Pike to try and bring more businesses into our community. And again, that's tentatively scheduled for November, which is issue. And that's everything.
Thank you for that. Districtal school boards?
I have just a few things. Next joint meeting with Colostro County is on Tuesday, October 2nd at 6:00, and they're going to go over the funding formula, the way it was originally created, and their thoughts about how to change that. It's also worth one credit for your certification if you decide to go. Registration's at 6:00, dinner's at 6:00, and the program begins at 6:45. That's at Valeris. And just a couple things about workshop. The keynote speaker this year is Mr. Steven Van Zant from Bruce Springsteen's Easy Street Band. He's going to be the guest speaker. He's also going to be performing one of those nights, I don't remember the night, and he'll be performing at the House of Blues in Atlantic City also. And he has also created a curriculum for curriculum and educational materials for schools and teachers, and they're going to be teaching Teach Rock Project is going to be available. It's a whole team of educators across the country with curriculum updates to teach children about the history of rock and roll in a fun way in the music department. So I'm not sure what the cost is, or that there's information in the magazine, I'll leave it for you. And the other thing was, I was not able to go to the Board of Directors meeting, but in that Board of Directors meeting, during the process of selecting a new president, vice president, and their board, I put my name in the hat for the nomination committee, however, I did not win. And Ann Erickson, who is county boards, also, she's on the county board and the Board of Directors, she is going to represent the southern counties for the nominating committee for the new president and the staff for next year.
Thank you. Anything else? Do you want to add anything else?
Oh, one thing. The convention this year, they were already completely booked, all of their vendors. So this is the first time ever going into the end of September, the school year, these are going into the school year, but they've completely been booked, so every vendor spot has been sold. And you can take up to 20, that's right, 20 people from your district this year. You have classes for certifications and educational for each and every different department, like buildings and grounds, the technology, and you can look in the book for the different credits that they have.
We did approve last week for our admin, last month for our admin team to go as well.
Okay. If they're up to 20, you can take this year. It's a higher amount, I believe, than last year.
So it's a lot of free junk, Dr. McCarron, so we bring it back a little. Officers will be filled with supplies. I think it was stressful.
Are you not having food?
I'll take it.
The only thing, answer that.
Yeah, answer it. I want to go to some food.
I brought Chris a burger. Like, six months on it.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll move along to new business. I need a motion for items numbers one to three under Property and Transportation.
I need a motion.
Motion made by Maria, seconded by Patty. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Ms. Buckland.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Schulego.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under personnel, I need a motion from one to six.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items number one through six under personnel.
I'll second.
Motion made by Naomi, seconded by Chaz. Questions? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Ms. Buckland.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Schulego.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'll see in public relation approval, or motion, excuse me, from one to six. Six was added.
I'll make a motion to approve items one through six under policy. I'll second.
Motion by Maria, seconded by Dan. Questions?
I have a question. What change on the HIB procedures?
It may say that the building level principal and the HIV coordinator can discuss whether or not they should continue with the investigation as an HIV or...
Where before, we had to investigate. So before, like, the word was used, we had to investigate, but now they can, like, meet and decide what they have to go through with the whole investigation or not. Any other question? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Ms. Buckland.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Schulego. We're in the process of getting all the information for New Jersey School Boards Convention, so we have different information pieces coming in daily. You will receive information for school boards at the next Board of Ed meeting, like the normal packet that you receive, as far as what events are taking place, and who's signed up for governance, and all those different pieces that are necessary for you to have. Over the past two years, Scott Murakovich has worked extremely hard with the state to gain Runnymede as being a childcare provider. Many school districts, in order for us to receive vouchers, or for families who the parent might, you know, only make a certain amount of money, or might be going to school, they provide vouchers for those parents for childcare. Many school districts, when they saw the process, chose not to go through the process and just, you know, said, we'll do a sliding scale or whatnot. It's a, it's a great resource for families that need that help and support, and Scott's done the process, and we've received official certification for all three buildings. So we are a childcare provider. At this point in time, I think we're the only school in Camden County, and there were three schools that were going through the process. So we've received our certification officially for all three of our buildings, which is great. So parents with vouchers, and that's a three-year license that we received. But what's interesting is, because there's so many agencies involved in getting that license, and school districts used to be exempt from that process altogether, but if you're receiving money from those agencies, you know you have the Department of Health, you have the Department of Child and Families, you have all these different people coming out to inspect our facilities, speak with our staff, and see that we are, we are in compliance with everything that we're doing, that we've received all the training that's necessary. So that speaks volumes to Scott and all of the before and after care staff, who work very hard in making sure that they've attained all those required trainings. And it's provided a great resource for our families. As you know, our numbers have increased every year for before and after care, and also for our summer camp that we run at Bingham and Downing both. We're at needing three staff members at this point in time, because we have over thirty students most days that are staying after for before and after care. So I think that speaks volumes to all the hard work that they've put in, and the environment that they've created for our students. As far as, the only other major thing is, right now, we do have all of our park data, and we're continuing to get more disaggregated reports. I will be giving an official, an official presentation at the October Board of Ed meeting for the park assessment. We are finalizing our benchmarking assessment for the month of September, so that will be done in the next week, with all students taking their initial star reading, star math scores. Questions?
First one, the childhood expansion grant, is that to have more fastness for preschool and assuming, or a longer gap?
So it's a five-year program, it would be a five-year expansion grant. So in order to receive the funding, you would have to, sorry, I'm trying to get it now. In order to receive the funding, in order to receive the funding, you have to be standing from a half-day program to at least a full-day program. It does not mean that you have, so we've had to put out a tentative idea of what that would look like. If we receive the funding, it is a competitive grant. There's a pot of money, which means, you know, we like competition, but there's a lot of money, and it depends on what resources we have available. More points are given for different areas as far as compliance, but it was also a very short period of time that we had to put the grant together. It was literally like a two-week turnaround period. So if we don't receive the money in this cycle, they are saying that it will be another cycle for the nineteen-twenty school year. This cycle now is for the current school year that we're currently in. So if there isn't, we already have the entire grant written, and I think, you know, the goal would be then, just like with the sustainability grant, you know, you have everything there, you have all the pieces together, it's then saying, okay, well, what's your feedback, having those conversations with, you know, the resources that are available, and rewriting and moving forward. So ideally, I think, you know, it would be bringing students in earlier, because we find that those earlier interventions definitely help our incoming kindergarten students, which is why for Title One this year, we brought kindergarten students in who were identified early. We did our Junior Hawks Camp, and all of those were very well received, and we had a good turnout.
Good. Second question, the voucher program. So where did we start at this point?
So we've always had the voucher, because we've been going through the process. However, we received, it was temporary, which meant they were coming out all the time, and we had to submit all these different things. So like, one of the final things they needed was a policy that you guys had a first reading of last time for technology for before and after care specifically. A lot of the things that they wanted, we already have as district policies, since it's a district program, that was our reasoning idea, but now we've received official...
Full certification.
Full certification, which we then hold those certificates for three years, and it's in all three buildings.
So can we get this info out to parents, if they're aware of this program? Because I'm sure there's plenty who are paying full price for daycare, and you're eligible for services through DSAZ.
Absolutely.
So can we get that out there? And can a parent switch over from being a full-time parent to go through the voucher program every three years?
With us running the program, we're very accommodating for any needs that arise with parents and families. That's one of, we feel like that's a benefit that we can offer. So our families who receive hearing re-logs are already informed of...
I'll get ready to say that now.
Of before and after care, and of course, that number, we're always looking to identify and make sure we're receiving.
I have one on governance. Is each board member a responsible registrar, or does your office...
We take care of all of them. So last year, they registered everyone themselves, like, not you guys, but school boards. If someone needed governance, they registered for that. I am, I just received the census back. I will make sure that everyone's registered for what items they need. So anyone who was just re-elected would be governance four this year, unless it was taken elsewhere, because you can't take them throughout the year or online. And then anyone who is newly elected to the board, you, it starts off with governance one, then governance two, so you just move up each year until you get to governance four. And as you know, once you hit governance four, it's every three years that you take governance four. And that's the update.
Okay, so here's my question. I took governance four. It'll be two years, so that means I don't have to take it this year.
Were you just elected this past November?
No, it's on the ballot.
So you shouldn't have to take it.
Okay.
So once you're elected, then you would take it to the next school board's convention. Remember, Chad didn't kick you out one year? He said you didn't have to be there.
I was getting my badge, and I took it three more times, and I just had to be pictures of my mom when I was two.
Well, I think the governance workshops this year are on the first day of conference.
Instead of the four.
Instead of the last day of conferences.
Governance one is on the first day?
Yeah.
The other ones are on different dates?
Yeah.
Because I did just pull that up.
Any other questions for Dr. McCarron?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
On our board page here.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, district reports, any questions on the principals' reports, nurses' report, building and ground report, or special education report at this time? No? PTA, you'll see over there, facilities, we have a lot of stuff planned for the school year. Committee report, are we prepared for one, or are we going to wait on that email? I know the committee just met.
Yeah. Mark, Mark took notes, and he's going to send an email out tomorrow to every board member, so you know exactly what was discussed. It'll brief everyone, so they're aware of everything.
And that was curriculum draft?
That'll be out tomorrow.
All right. Camden County. Camden County Services?
Yes. Camden County Educational Services, an update there is, they are working on developing a program where school districts could turn to them to have security officers. In that discussion I mentioned to the superintendent of Camden County Education Services Commission that my experience has been that a lot of districts usually turn to their local police department, but this is an additional service if they wanted to look elsewhere. That would be available for that next school year. They are going to kick off, probably sometime after January first, a student internship directly at the Camden County Educational Services Commission for high school, high school students. They will be paid, and they would work ten to fifteen hours a week doing different types of work at the complex. It sounds like, especially if they're business students, business education students, they would, that would fit perfectly into that type of internship. It's almost like a co-op program. Yeah. They are making some progress with Virtua and Jefferson. They brought Jefferson into the picture. They want to be able to offer in two thousand nineteen, twenty psychological assistance to children that are suffering from depression, thinking about suicide, using drugs, using alcohol, any of that, a service for any district. It's a slow process, because they have to look at state regulations and everything else, but they're now working with both Virtua and the Jefferson Hospital programs to try and develop something for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. That was Camden County Educational Services Commission. At the planning and zoning board meeting, a little action took place. There was approval for someone in the community to build on their property a thirty-by-eighteen, thirty-foot-by-eighteen-foot garage. There was approval for a dance studio, was approved at the corner of Lindsay and Clemmersbridge Road. I'm not sure whether that's going to open, because it wasn't stated. The La Quinta Hotel, which was originally a Hollyett Hotel, the La Quinta Corporation has just reached an agreement with the Runnymede Borough. They're going to be converting that, a five-million-dollar renovation, converting it to an assisted living complex. It's probably going to take one and a half to two years for the renovations to take place, but that's going to happen. Last thing that came up on the agenda is the redevelopment model that's been developed by consultants. They have to do a formal presentation to the community, and that, right now, is tentatively going to be scheduled for the month of November. So anyone that lives on the Black Horse Pike between the Turpine and Clemmersbridge Road, you could be affected, but only if you agree. The only way that they would take over a property is if that family or person or persons living in that dwelling wants to sell it, otherwise they won't touch it, but they want to do some kind of redevelopment with the Black Horse Pike to try and bring more businesses into our community. And again, that's tentatively scheduled for November, which will issue. And that's everything.
Thank you for that. New Jersey School Boards?
I have just a few things. Next joint meeting with Colostro County is on Tuesday, October second at six, and they're going to go over the funding formula, the way it was originally created, and their thoughts about how to change that. It's also worth one credit for your certification if you decide to go. Registration's at six, dinner's at six, and the program begins at six forty-five at Valeris. And just a couple of things about workshop. The keynote speaker this year is Mr. Steven Van Zant from Bruce Springsteen's Easy Street Band. He's going to be the guest speaker. He's also going to be performing one of those nights, I don't remember the night, but he'll be performing at the House of Blues in Atlantic City also. And he has also created a curriculum for, curriculum and educational materials for schools and teachers, and they're going to be teaching, Teach Rock Project is going to be available. It's a whole team of educators across the country with curriculum updates to teach children about the history of rock and roll and the floodway and the music department. So I'm not sure what the cost is, or that there's information in the magazine, I'll leave it for you. And the other thing was, I was not able to go to the Board of Directors meeting, but in that Board of Directors meeting, during the, in the process of selecting a new president, vice president, and their board, I put my name in the hat for the nomination committee. However, I did not win. And Ann Erickson, who is county boards, also, she's on the county board and the Board of Directors, she is going to represent the southern counties for the nominating committee for the new president and the staff for next year.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else? Do you want to add anything else?
Oh, one thing. The convention this year, they were already completely booked, all of their vendors. So this is the first time ever going into the end of September, the school year, because they're going into the school year, that they've completely been booked, so every vendor's spot has been sold. And you can take up to twenty, that's right, twenty people from your district this year. You have classes for certifications and educational for each and every different department, like buildings and grounds, the technology, and you can look in the book for the different credits that they have.
We did approve last week for our admin, last month for our admin team to go as well.
They're up to twenty you can take this year. It's a higher amount, I believe, than last year.
So that's a lot of free junk, Dr. McCarron, are we bringing back a little?
All systems are filled with supplies.
I think we have a stress pool. Are you not having food?
The only thing's answered.
I need a motion for item numbers one to three under property and transportation. Motion made by Maria, seconded by Patty. Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Ms. Rockan.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Shalago.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under personnel, I need a motion from one to six.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items number one through six under personnel.
Motion made by Naomi, seconded by Chad. Questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Ms. Rockan.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Shalago.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Finance, we need a motion to approve items numbers one through seven. There was two, the dental's on there. Want to take a look at that? Number seven, and professional development.
Want to make that motion?
Motion made by Angel.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. Questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Ms. Rockan.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Shalago.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Curriculum, I need a motion from one to three.
I'll make a motion for curriculum.
I'll second.
Motion made by Patty, seconded by Maria. Questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Ms. Rockan.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Shalago.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All same public relation approval, or motion, excuse me, from one to six. Six was added.
I'll make a motion to approve items one through six under policies.